Good morning, everyone. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is December 17th at 10:00 a.m. And we will start with a salute to the flag. If Dr. Kingsley could lead us in the salute to the flag. It's great to have you here.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as a note for folks who are tuning in for the public hearing item, item 20, that's the Housing Amendments 2.5A. They are going to be delayed due to a staff request until 2025. We'll keep you updated on when that will be rescheduled. So just want to make sure that folks know about that information. We'll now move into roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair. Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Andreola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Canderas. And I'm Jan Galis, New Year County Clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We did have an invocation scheduled for today, but Reverend Fisher cannot make it. So we will now move into item four, our public comment. Manager Brown.
Item four is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are being made to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available. Public comment is welcomed during public comment periods and is limited to three minutes per person per public comment period. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted. However, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personally, personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. All comments are to be made, are to be directed to the commission as a whole. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person to be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined, as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you, Manager Brown. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Dr. Chad Kingsley, followed by Paul White.
Good morning, Chair Hill and members of the board. My name is Dr. Chad Kingsley. I serve as District Health Officer for Northern Nevada Public Health. So you don't have to listen to me three times. I'm commenting on agenda items 12, 16, and 19. First, I want to take a moment to recognize and commend County Manager Eric Brown for his exceptional leadership and service to the Washoe County over the past year. His steady hand and decisive action during the Davis Creek Fire were testament to his ability to lead under pressure and prioritize the safety and well-being of our community. Under his management, Washoe County has demonstrated resilience and adaptability. Mr. Brown's focus on performance management and his commitment to fostering collaboration among departments have been instrumental in maintaining, maintaining high standards in service delivery for our residents. Second, I'd also like to extend my gratitude to this board for their thoughtful consideration in appointing a commissioner and the county's non-elected appointee to the Northern Nevada Public Health District Board of Health. Your recognition of the importance of public health in shaping the future of our region is deeply appreciated, and I am confident these decisions will help strengthen our collective efforts to build a healthier community. Thank you again for your time, leadership, and ongoing dedication to Washoe County residents.
Thank you.
Paul White, followed by Tim McGivney.
Paul White, I've got an update for you on the CARES campus and a solution. The newest information comes to us from whistleblower employees inside the facility. What's continuing over there? 24/7 drug abuse and sales by clients and staff, more deadly weapons and violence than ever, and death threats to staff. There is no program. If they've got 700 people in there, 650 of them are laying around doing nothing. Nobody wants to work. And the idea that, as they publish, that it's a 30 to 60-day stay. No, they've got people now who've been there over four years. New clientele that are getting dumped on them. We've seen at least three buses from Sacramento. They've been dumping severely mentally retarded adults and they're a danger to themselves. And probation and parole has dumped hundreds of prisoners there, which is an absolute violation of how they're supposed to handle releasing criminals. This is nobody's idea of helping the homeless. What does VOA think about this? Well, I spoke to their new CEO, and he had absolutely nothing to say because he was amazed that any of this was going on. If you've ever watched the meeting of the movie Idiocracy, that was what I felt like the conversation was. $72 million later, there is not one success story in the tent or safe camp, and they will not argue that there is. The sole reason for the mess is it's all funded with federal money that you cannot make anybody accountable for it there. It's not helped by the fact that Manager Brown has had no transparency over there, no legitimate tours, and now doesn't want to do a homeless count, I understand, this year? So there's one solution. The county needs to get out of the homeless business. They need to deed, deed the facilities and that to a nonprofit coalition of local churches headed up by Victory Outreach and Gospel Mission, who have proved for decades that they know how to do this. You'd get immediate results, numbers would drop, success stories would increase. I talked with Mayor Sheevy about this last week, and she said that she is 100% behind it. And more than that, she asked if I would deliver to you all her interest in meeting with all of you as soon as she possibly could to discuss how this could be implemented before the county homeless population increases from its 2,000 to its projected high of 32,000. It's like the story of the frog in boiling water. You know, the water just gradually increased until it cooked. And that's what's happening with our homeless thing. If we keep delaying this, by the time we say, you know, we ought to try something, it's going to be too late. And I would add that the program we're funding over here, there's not one program in the nation funded by this that is a success. Not one, and no one claims there to be one. I'll be in.
Tim McGivney, followed by Dr. Eloy Iwerty.
Good morning. Tim McGivney here. Just to go off of what Paul was talking about, the meeting with Mayor Sheevy was very encouraging. And I work with many ministries and churches in the area here in Washoe County, and they would be more than happy to come up with a plan to take over the CARES campus and do something that'll actually help. As Paul was mentioning, right now, it's a failure. I have many guys that I work with that go into those facilities, and if they're clean and sober, being surrounded by all the drugs and criminals and people not wanting to change ends up having its effect on them. A recent example of that is a friend of mine who went into the Sage Street Apartments, which is flooded with drugs and alcohol, parties all night, around their little fire there they have. He went in sober, and I haven't talked to him since. Last I talked to a friend of his, he's using again because of the influence around him. Just excited to see what the commissioners will do with Hillary Sheevy being interested in implementing the changes that Paul talked about. It was a big surprise to me during that meeting, but also just gave me hope that if we get rid of the federal funding and get this in the hands of churches and nonprofits privately, we can have barriers, which aren't barriers. It's just requirements for people to be clean and sober, which is going to save lives. I've lost a lot of friends to overdose and just to dying on the streets. I was on the streets previously myself, so I know what it's like. And with there being no, no barriers or no requirements for people to have jobs, to be clean and sober, and to follow laws, all you get is more of the same. So this is an exciting time to see some real change, and I look forward to what will come of it. Thank you.
Dr. Eloy Iwerty, followed by Bill Miller.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Eloy Iwerty. I'm currently serving as the Chief Medical Officer of the Reno Sparks Tribal Health Center, and I made application for the vacancy on the Board of Health, and just wanted to take a few moments to introduce myself and see if there were any questions from the commissioners.
I'm sorry, sir. We cannot ask you questions, but you can give us some background about who you are.
Yeah, I have been a physician since 1975. I have certifications in internal medicine and endocrinology. I also have a master's degree in population health management, and I just wanted to offer that expertise for public service. So that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bill Miller, followed by Cynthia Cooper.
Did I get that right? Good morning, Commissioner Chair Hill, Commissioners, staff, and fellow citizens. I'm Bill Miller, livable climate advocate, here to acknowledge and thank the commission and dedicated staff for the work you have done to keep Washoe County thriving, livable, and beautiful. First, thanks to your farsighted action, creating the Washoe County Sustainability Department, and the remarkable work Brian Befferd and Emily Stapleton have already achieved under your leadership. Together, you have increased micro-mobility infrastructure, significantly reduced countywide emissions, been awarded the EEGPG funding and solutions for more resilient communities, started One Water Nevada Water Purification Project, been awarded numerous federal grants to build a better, more sustainable county, and all of this as you continue to add more EVs to our fleet. None of this was easy. I just want you to know that it is noticed and appreciated. Thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Cynthia Cooper, followed by Drew Rebar.
She's going to run over, but don't stop.
The Grinch hated libraries, the whole library scene. No one's sure just why this split his spleen. It could be his head wasn't screwed on just right. It could be perhaps his shoes were too tight. But I think most likely reason of all may have been that his heart was two sizes too small. Staring down from his cave with a sour, grinchy frown at the warm lighted windows below in their town, he knew every Who down beneath in Whoville was busy reading books, even banned books still. "They're using their bookmarks," he snarled with a sneer. "They're reading out loud so others can hear." Then he growled with his grinch brows upbeat. "I must find some way to stop people from reading. I know just what to do." The Grinch laughed in his throat, and he made a quick Santee Claus hat and a coat, and he chuckled and clucked. "What a great grinchy trick. With this coat and this hat, I look just like Saint Nick." All their windows were dark, quiet filled the air. All the Who's were all dreaming sweet dreams without care when he came to the library downtown on the square. "This is stop number one," the old Grinchy Claus hissed, and he slipped through the book return, empty bags in his fist. He crawled down the conveyor, a rather tight pinch, but if Santa could do it, so could the Grinch. In the stacks, little Who books stood all shelved in a row. "These banned books," he grinned, "are the first things to go." Then he set out to cancel this popular reading trend, to defund, to disrupt, and to open minds' end. He stuffed all the books out the book return with glee, and now grinned the Grinch, "I'll continue my spree." He sprinted from branch to branch the Who folks I'll love. He nudged the books and kits out with a shove. It was quarter past dawn, all the Who's still a bed, all the Who's still a snooze, when he packed up his sled, packed it up with their books, newspapers, and music CDs, the art, computers, magazines, and DVDs. "They're just waking up. I know just what they'll do. Their mouths will hang open a minute or two, and then all the Who's in Whoville will cry boo hoo." "That's a noise," grinned the Grinch, "that I simply must hear." So he paused, and the Grinch put a hand to his ear, and he did hear a sound rising over the snow. But the sound wasn't sad. Why, the sound sounded merry. All the people in Whoville voted to save the library. Every Who down in Whoville, the tall and the small, recited their favorite books and poems without any books at all. He hadn't stopped reading. From happening, they read, writing their own books and poems instead. And he puzzled for hours, till his puzzler was sore. The Grinch thought of something he hadn't before. Maybe reading, he thought, doesn't come from a store. Maybe reading perhaps means a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't do an exception for three minutes. Thank you.
Drew Rebar, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Drew Rebar, for the record, and I'm feeling rather grinchy today in my Toy Run t-shirt, Toy Run 2024. I was down there at the warehouse where they were keeping the toys, piles of toys going out to the kids for the season, so it's a great thing. Thank you for the donations from the county. That really helped them a lot. Just to let you all know, I am going to be running for Assembly District 40 again 2026, so hopefully the county will put my name on the ballot this time and not leave it off. This happened last time. That would be a really nice thing if we follow the law and follow the Constitution. That's really what I'm all about, is the Constitution. I was thinking about things. You know how you all, you guys all go, and hopefully you all got my email. You all go for sexual harassment training, I think, multiple times a year, right? Wouldn't it be cool to have constitutional training go with that so that everybody's rights could be upheld? Now, I'm feeling rather grinchy after that last commenter spoke. I really did enjoy the poem. My heart's not very small. My shoes fit very well. Thank you very much. But I am suing the library, suing the county, and suing multiple county employees, and that's moving forward. Mr. Large responded to my complaint, and I appreciated that. On the other hand, I am able to go after summary judgment for our center because they never responded. Interesting. So a conference, I did request a conference with Mr. Large to move the case forward, and I'm looking forward to depositions. Mr. West sent me a letter, and so it'll be interesting to depose him and dig into how the county is deciding who can go to library events, who can't go to library events, and why you discriminate against certain people. Hopefully, you guys did see my, my video that I put together. It's on auditing Reno 911. So if you go look at that, that video's out there, and it shows a lot of just different incidents over the years where I'd gone into different libraries and had been mistreated by employees. Again, this is why I think that constitutional training, you know, you get all the employees together to talk about not slapping each other on the butt. Well, why don't you get all the employees together to say, hey, this is what the First Amendment means. This is what you can do. This is what you can't do. This is, this is what the Bill of Rights means. This is how our government's structured. You know, Article 4 of the Nevada Constitution, legislative, all that good stuff. You know, what, what, what does the Constitution really mean to our employees? Because that really defines what their jobs are, serving the public. Because the Bill of Rights is there to protect the public, to protect the people from the overreaching laws that our legislators put upon us to control the public. And I think that we need to get all of this under control. Government needs to serve the people. The people don't need to serve the government, and I think that we've been flip-flopped over the last 50 years in what government is supposed to be doing. And I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Angela Shea.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address following the money to health when it comes to homelessness. When you become very ill, it can be very intensive, and going to your doctor or a hospital can be very expensive. Or if you're seriously injured in some sort of accident, it can usually wind up being a very expensive event. Getting health insurance itself can be quite expensive, but going to the hospital without it can also be very expensive. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, but if you cannot afford either one of them, you can wind up being very insecure. But if you can afford either of them because you are quite wealthy, then you are much more likely to continue to be quite healthy. But if you've lost your job and wind up unemployed, you wind up losing your health insurance that you had when you were employed. When you're sick and have no money, you cannot afford health care, and that can lead to you winding up in a sad state of despair. And if you become injured, having been involved in an accident, how can you pay for the emergency ward if you cannot even pay your rent? You are way more susceptible to any kind of illness if you're going hungry and if you are homeless. If you are wealthy, you can afford any kind of medication. But if you are poor and homeless, you go through a state of frustration. So in order to recover, the wealthy can afford. But people who are poor or homeless are usually just ignored. So if you follow the money, the rich will have much more. But if you won't find much money, when you find the poor. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I'm wealth, and if I'm wealthy enough to come back, I'll have even more to say. Oh, and by the way, I'd also like to say I hope each and every one of you have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Angela Shea, followed by Levon Brooks.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to introduce myself as a candidate for the non-elected District Board of Health position. My name is Angela Shea, and I have been a resident of Washoe County since 2002 after relocating from rural Nevada to attend the University of Nevada Reno, where I earned my degree in public health. Over the last two decades, I have been committed to helping those in need in our community through different public health initiatives and as a registered nurse. As a native Nevadan with rural roots, public service and community engagement were ingrained at an early age, and I am motivated to take my career and educational experience to work collectively and respectfully, among other members of the District Board of Health, to ensure our community health needs are identified and advocated for. I understand how social determinants of health affect our community, and I'm dedicated to working as a team to navigate and approve these issues. With advanced degrees in leadership and healthcare law, I have a strong foundation of healthcare process and the importance of my service to advocate, acknowledge, and approve legislative and public funds to public health concerns in our area. My mission and passion is to protect, develop, and advance the health of our community. I could continue to elaborate on my experience in education. Still, I want you to understand why I stand before you in requesting your consideration and selecting me as a District Board of Health member. I am here to serve my community, and I consider this opportunity to proudly represent those I live with, work with, eat, play with, and care for. I'm here to be a voice and representative for the people. In conclusion, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself and look forward to serving on the District Board of Health.
Thank you.
Levon Brooks, followed by Jessica Glover.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairwoman Hill and Manager Brown. Nice to see you. Just a quick thank you. Item 18 is a continuation of a pilot that we're conducting in the foster care system. And if it wasn't for the privacy issues, I would have so much data to share with you because we are being excited and wildly successful with, with our kiddos. One of our moms was supposed to be here today, and, well, this is a hard time for families to make during the day. If this were 4 o'clock in the afternoon, I'm certain that we would have more families here. It is their choice. But again, just to thank you for living that strategic direction. This is a new approach. It's an overnight success that we have been working on for 15 years. We have, we have the system. It's patent pending, and it's a full-stack software system. And our, our hope is that many more people will be able to receive services through this approach and also get wildly successful outcomes as we're experiencing with our pilot with the county. So thank you for your vision. Thank you for supporting this. And maybe offline, we can do something with actually looking at the data that we have collected and the success stories that we have. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Jessica Glover, followed by Samantha Strasser.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Glover. For those who don't know me, thank you for giving me this time and opportunity to come before you. I'm here to speak on the Washoe County library system and what that means to me. As a longtime Washoe County resident, I grew up in the Washoe County libraries. When school was closed, I was at the library. And because of the library hours currently, it made it possible for me to complete my certification for peer support specialist. My program was supposed to be for three months, and I did it in a week because the library was open. Another issue is the Washoe County homeless. A lot of people don't want to hear the truth because the truth hurts. As a former homeless woman, if you want to change the homeless, stop giving. Takers would keep taking as long as we were giving. People would change their lives. They would want to get off the streets. They would want to stop drinking. They would want to stop doing drugs. As long as you are giving free services, they don't have to do anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samantha Strasser, followed by Tara DeCieres.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Samantha Strasser, here again to speak in support of the Washoe County Library. Last month, one public commenter brought in a document that had been mailed out to some registered voters. I was surprised to see this document very clearly showing a misrepresentation of WC-1 as a tax increase rather than a continuation of an existing tax. I would like to reemphasize the damage that this lie has done. Elections depend on the distribution of accurate, factual information. If some voters took this information as truth without realizing it was false, then the integrity of this result is questionable and may not be an accurate representation of the voters' wishes. Wherever this misinformation came from, it has undermined our democratic process, and it is deeply concerning to me. I would also like to draw your attention to the Washoe County Strategic Plan, specifically the section I have highlighted here under quality public service. The county exists to serve the public. We put the needs and expectations of citizens at the center of everything we do and take pride in delivering services of the highest quality. Regardless of any individual feelings about the library and the services it provides, it is the duty of this board to deliver high-quality public services to your constituents. Based on the majority of comments I heard at the November 19th meeting, the public is telling you that the library is a valuable service that we want maintained. Further, under the FY25 Plan Update, under the Fiscal Sustainability and Efficient Delivery of Regional Services, one of the ways in which the board will do this is to engage with the community and Board of County Commissioners for direction of library tax. The community has engaged with the board and told you where we wish the direction of those funds to go. It is up to you, the board, to represent the wishes of to represent the wishes of the community and carry out this duty. Thank you all. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you. Tara DeCieres followed by Ross Olson.
Hello. I'm, I'm also here to talk about the library budget. WC-1, I guess at this point, is water under the bridge, but it is worth asking why it failed. Disinformation, not misinformation, by one of the two major political parties likely played a role. Could the few percentage points that it failed by be explained by the fact that the Washoe Republican Voter Guide told people that it would raise their taxes? We'll never know exactly what the numbers would have been without this disinformation, but it seems possible that it swayed the outcome. I volunteered with freedom to read Nevada to work on the WC-1 campaign. And both our group and also the library probably could have done some things differently. We did the best with the resources and knowledge that we had at the time, and we worked very hard. However, the important thing now is the future. A twenty-five percent reduction in library services is going to do grave harm to the residents of Washoe County. Some of our most challenging problems right now are the crisis in literacy among students in Washoe County schools and also the crisis in housing throughout Washoe County. The library system makes important contributions on both of those issues. It is already staffed and programmed to deal with those issues. It provides early literacy and family literacy problems in services like the housing kiosks and the kids' cafe. Problems associated with low literacy and increasing homelessness will be worsened if the library budget is substantially reduced. As you're preparing the budget, I would ask each one of you to set aside one hour on a weekend to go to the library and sit and observe what happens there. I did that recently because my daughter was volunteering on a weekend day at the library. You'll see the same thing that I did on that day. You'll see people who work all week taking their kids to the library in the only free hours that they have to attend programs and check out books. You'll also see librarians helping people with technology. The library serves many, many seniors who do not have an internet connection at home and do not own a smartphone. So their only way to access email or any online resources is at the library. You'll also see people spending time in one of the only places that it's free to go and be in public, which is the library. Please, I ask you to take the time to go and sit and observe what happens at the library on the weekends, which are one of the times when services are most likely to be reduced. And I hope that that firsthand experience helps convince you that the libraries need to be fully funded to serve our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross Olson followed by Kelly Briggs.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize I won't be able to stay for the whole meeting as I have some work commitments, but I did want to come down and introduce myself. My name is Ross Olson. I am a candidate for the, for an open spot on the Board of Equalization. I am a second-generation Sparks railroader and a fifth-generation Northern Nevadan. I very much believe in public service. I, I love this area. It is, and it has been really, yeah, really inspiring for me to see people learn what my family has been blessed to know for generations, that this is a wonderful place to raise a family. It's a wonderful area with character and characters. And also, you know, I also firmly believe that when we have the opportunity to, to give back and to serve, we should, we should take advantage of those opportunities and give, give back and help our community. And so in that spirit, I would like to throw my hat in the ring. I, I have previously served as a deputy district, or excuse me, a deputy attorney general, where I represented the Department of Taxation in various matters. And as I, as I sought out opportunities to volunteer, I saw that this may be a good fit for me. I don't pretend to be the, be the ultimate candidate. I don't want to hold myself out as someone with great expertise who's superior to really anybody else. The Board of Equalization is actually a very, it could be a very good interdisciplinary board that can benefit from a variety of backgrounds. And so with that, I would just like to offer my, offer my candidacy. And if it, if this board would so, so choose, I would be delighted to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Briggs followed by Sheri Mccone.
Good morning. I'm Kelly, and I'm here to just say thank you for giving the pilot program that Levon mentioned a chance. I'm a mom of six. My husband and I have been married for twenty-three years. We have five children. And we started the foster care in 2020. And we adopted a little girl from foster care in June of 2023. She, we've had her since infancy. She was, we got her addicted to drugs, things like that. And she experienced months of withdrawals when she was little. It didn't really affect her when she was little. But when she hit about three years old, it became, it started to become kind of obvious that she wasn't settling very well. And I was struggling to manage some of her behaviors. And so I called the, you know, Washoe County, the post adopt support system and all of that. And they got me hooked up with iGenerate. So it was like some kind of a collaboration. I didn't really know how it worked. I just knew I was getting help. And I was so thankful because it takes a long time to get into services. And sometimes you don't really know you need services until you needed them like yesterday. So that was a really huge blessing. It was basically about twenty-four weeks of rapid skill building. And I was able to choose specifically what I needed help with. And, and they were very gracious and generous to help me understand that maybe some of the wording or some of the ways I was just parenting my other kids, that I mean, I've been a parent a long time, but I don't know anything, apparently. So they were helping me very much get through some of the behaviors that she was managing so that I could handle her in public better. So we weren't, you know, leaving places screaming and yelling, her screaming and yelling, things like that. So I just wanted to say thank you for giving it a shot. I'm sure that was kind of a shot in the dark or something, not for them. They've really worked a lot to put it all together. I have friends that work for HSI that have heard about it for a long time. So that was kind of a cool thing to hear that it's all coming together. So I just wanted to be here to say thank you so much for that and that it has blessed our family particularly in that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Mccone followed by Richard Bissett.
Hello. Good morning, esteemed Commissioners of our county board, community leaders, and fellow residents. My name is Sheri Mccone, and I'm honored to be here today to introduce myself as a candidate for appointment to the District Board of Health. I would first like to express my sincere gratitude to our Washoe County Commissioners and the Board of Health for your tireless efforts and dedication in improving our health and the well-being of our community over the past several years. Your leadership is instrumental in addressing our public health emergencies, improving access to healthcare, reducing environmental exposures and risks, ensuring clean air and water, and promoting our healthy lifestyles. I appreciate your commitment. As a lifelong resident of Washoe County, I've witnessed remarkable growth and challenges our community has faced over the years. This region has shaped who I am and instilled the deep commitment to serving our community. And I'm now seeking to serve further by joining the Board of Health. For the past twenty years, I've worked in healthcare. Currently is a nurse practitioner. I'm a business owner of thriving medical practice and of a local preschool. I've been providing care to our community across a diverse range of settings, from our community health clinics, area hospitals, and now in the private sector. The experience has given me unique insights into the healthcare needs of our population. Throughout my career, I've witnessed the importance of strong, responsive public health infrastructure. My company was entrusted with the sole state contract for the provision of the COVID- nineteen treatments, including monoclonal antibody treatments to all Nevadans. The COVID- nineteen pandemic highlighted not only the critical role of public health in safeguarding our community, but also gaps that can exist in our public health system, including access and resources. This has further ignited my passion for public health advocacy, emphasizing our need for preventative care, education, support systems, ensuring that everyone can lead a healthy life. I would be bringing my extensive clinical expertise, deep-rooted community connection, along with a collaborative spirit focused on finding solutions. I envision a board that not only responds to the health crises, but proactively invests in education and preventative measures, empowering residents to take charge of their health. In closing, I am dedicated to being a voice for our community, advocating for policies that promote health equity and enhance the quality of care across Washoe County. I'm eager to bring my experience, passion, and commitment to the Board of Health, working alongside you to create a healthier future. Thank you for considering my candidacy, and I look forward to being, to contribute to the health of Washoe County.
Thank you. Richard Bissett.
Good morning, fine people. And thank you so much for what you've done all year. You must be very proud. You've accomplished a great deal. I want to read a little bit about one of your sister organizations, actually two of them, Washoe County School District and Northern Nevada Public Health. And there's a reason why I'm doing this, and I'll tell you at the end. Hats off to the Washoe County School District for their efforts to replace dirty, gas-powered lawn care equipment with clean electric versions. Lawn and garden equipment exchange project. On October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees approved a memorandum of understanding with NNPH for the acceptance of a donation of battery-powered landscaping equipment and training for facilities throughout the WCSD, Washoe County School District. As part of the project, Air Quality Management Division is donating approximately two hundred and fifty pieces of battery-powered electric equipment to replace gas-powered equipment, including all handheld equipment, edgers, trimmers, blowers, chainsaws at all Title I schools, all high-usage handheld equipment at non-Title I schools, and all push mowers at all schools in the district. This project is the driver for a new policy within the school district where only battery-powered electric equipment will be purchased in the future. Running a gas-powered lawnmower for one hour creates as much pollution as driving three hundred miles in an average car. And that's nothing to talk about the individuals working, the landscapers, that often do not wear masks or hats in the sun and inhale all that pollution. In total, this project will reduce emissions by tens of thousands of pounds annually. And I can only think that they were thinking of what you all have done in the way of green policies. I hate to even bring this up because you've done so much, but I would ask for you to consider the same type of thing for Washoe County buildings and lawn care, et cetera. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Trista Gomez.
Trista Gomez, please put my comments on the record verbatim. A performance review, not a fun thing for anybody, particularly when there are concerns and questions. And I see that Mr. Brown had a direct review from about thirteen people. Problematic is there's no opportunity for anonymity with real concerns. There is no pleasure in asking these questions or making observations. In fact, I really wish we could talk about how great things were going. Unfortunately, people rarely get involved or, or pay attention when things are going well, and instead start to pay attention when they're impacted negatively in their quality of life or their livelihood. Three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, plus benefits, plus a bonus, plus close to another half a million dollars in severance pay. In the event that there's a termination, these numbers surely require, deserve, and deserve oversight and accountability. There's a lot of stuff to say here, but I'm out of breath. I was rushing here. These ten o'clock meetings are rough on everybody who works. And so I'm just going to make, say a couple of other things. I was trying to look. There's a pool of candidates in October of two thousand nineteen. And I was trying to look for the Eric Brown, and I, I couldn't find a resume. I couldn't find any of these things. And so, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I don't know what it is. But the Eric Brown that I could find had continuous taxpayer-paid service without any private sector experience. I always feel that that's problematic because people in the public sector who only have ever worked in the public sector have a hard time understanding the problems or the impacts of the policies on the private, private sector. And so this is a concern to me. And given the outcomes in the past four years of the county, I do have some concerns. And I feel that they're warranted. In a normal job performance review on management, there's a question of culture and outcomes, and I'll give a brief description of both. Subjectively, the culture looks to be very contentious. disenfranchised, angry, distressful residents and constituents. In a normal workplace, this would be seen as a direct result of leadership and management. On an objective or outcome-based review, I could see that the budget went up about thirty-eight percent, per my calculations, in the four years that Mr. Brown's been in office. Additionally, other budgets are easy, from other jurisdictions are easy to read. They're clear. I can break down personnel issues. There are questions that you don't even have to ask because they're on the budget. In contrast, when I'm looking at the county budget and I'm trying to get information about personnel costs and personnel percentages, I have been told, I've been given this big convoluted report, but no summary of this information. There's a greater expectation of accountability with these positions. I have more to say. I hope to be able to be here at the other part of it. But right now, I'm out of time, and thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take a brief break, and then we will come back for the rest of the agenda at eleven o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
Manager Brown.
Item five is commissioners, county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Manager Brown?
I do, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to point out that this is the first Board of County Commission meeting where we are using our new language translation tools, which is Wordly AI. We've been running it in the background for a few meetings now to test it and make sure it works as intended. Some of you, or if you're in chambers, you noticed that the screen to my left over by the clock actually is translating the text of what's being spoken for people who are language impaired, or also for folks that have English proficiency issues. We issue iPads in the back of the room so that they're able to see the text in their languages. So I applaud our tech services group, and Elizabeth Jordan, and the folks in our HR group who have been working on this. This is a tool that will also be used in other aspects of county meetings and conversations. Secondly, I'd like to provide an update. Commissioner Herman and I received an update from the HR team yesterday with regards to the recruitment for the registrar voters. The long and the short of it is, we are still chasing down references for the finalist candidates that are being considered. With the holidays and all that's going on, we're simply having issues getting ahold of those folks. So we don't have resolution at this point. We're looking to close this out in the first week of January if all goes well with reaching these folks. So I know Commissioner Herman asked for an update at our last meeting. That's where we are. The interviews are complete, but we're simply trying to make sure that we understand the feedback from the references. Third, I'd like to just share that our senior center here on Ninth Street will be closed to the public from January 8th through the end of March to undergo major renovations. So during that period, meals will be served in a modular dining room near the Reno Rodeo site here on the Ninth Street campus that holds about 60 people. They'll be making arrangements to serve three sequential seatings a day to accommodate all the folks. And Meals on Wheels will continue to have service uninterrupted. And other regular activities that are delivered at the Ninth Street Center will be moved to the Evelyn Mount Center. There will be more announcements of all of this in more detail over the next week. I just wanted to, since this is our last meeting of the year, make sure that folks understand there's going to be some change and some inconvenience in the near term. Based on what I've seen already in terms of the upgrades to Ninth Street, it will be well worth it. That's all I have this morning, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Manager Brown. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to talk about one thing today, this morning. We have several items on the agenda today that deal with food for, you know, dragged out to homes and food that is served over here in the senior center and the different senior centers throughout the county. And I think maybe we should have some kind of a guidance, maybe a couple of folks from the county that could kind of check on these meals to make sure that we're providing nutritious and delicious food for the people that we serve. Otherwise, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. I mean, if we're doing the lowest bidder, that's just not going to work. So I think we need to do a little work on that. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to start off by thanking my fellow commissioners, wishing you guys a happy holiday. Thank you for all your hard work here at the DIAS, on our regional boards. Our attendance out in the community is seen not only in our meetings, but at our events. I just wanted to extend my thanks and gratitude to all of you and all your hard work during this year. I wanted to apologize for my absence last week. At the end of last year, I was appointed to represent the 17 Nevada counties on a group that meets regularly in Las Vegas. And I did want to provide a quick update for my colleagues. This is the Commission on Innovation and Excellence. We've been working all year. We're about two-thirds of the way done. I chair the Career Pathway Subcommittee. It's been a lot of work, but really rewarding work. We have a working group of about 25 people that represent the Nevada Department of Education, policymakers throughout the state, parents, teachers, businesspeople. It's a really diverse group representing rural Nevada, urban Nevada, and it's been just eye-opening to see how we can help move the needle on education. So this isn't really in our purview as county commissioners, but it's been an absolute delight to be a part of it. Our 30-page recommendation is almost done. They're buttoning up the last pieces, and it is going to be rolled into a BDR that Senator Maryland Dandara Loop is going to champion and carry this legislative session. So I just wanted to give you all an update on that.
Thank you for your work on that. That's great. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you. I also would like to extend a huge Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody. What a great time of joy. And I had mentioned that I thought that December was fat-free month, and I don't know, the scale doesn't necessarily match. But I'll tell you what, I guess that's what resolutions were for in January. But it's just been amazing to see everyone in the community helping to celebrate in various ways and various cultures. So Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays as well. I do want to share that I chair the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board, and I serve on that with Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Herman. And I know they'll be also eager to celebrate as well that finally, the five-year plan has been released by the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Authority. They've really updated their dashboard. It's a great opportunity for anyone who understands or wants to understand about planning, wants to understand the approach, how compliance works, and how everything that we do in a region with all jurisdictions is well-planned and well-coordinated. So I did want to do a huge shout-out to Dr. Smith, who is the director of that agency, along with his amazing team, as well as the team here at Washoe County who helps as well in terms of providing data and information, again, along with the other jurisdictions. So it was a huge celebration. It was one of those things where you almost wanted fanfare after them working so hard. But it was approved unanimously by the board, and I thought that as a community, we should know everyone's hard at work trying to make sure that we have planned growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I'd like to echo some of my fellow commissioners' comments, wishing everyone a Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas. And I've got a few things that I'd like to talk about. One is, you know, election season is over, holidays will soon be over. I'm going to, spring is on the way. I'm going to start having more of my town hall meetings with constituents in District Two. I found a couple of new venues, and so that'll be in the near future. So I want to make sure people are aware that we'll have an opportunity to come and meet your commissioner and then share any concerns you might have in District Two. We've got a senior breakfast coming up Friday across the parking lot, senior breakfast. And I encourage everyone to show up, seniors, and invite your friends and relatives that are seniors, and have them show up at the breakfast Friday morning. We'll be serving, or we, a lot of the elected officials, a lot of the county employees, will be serving breakfast to the seniors. So that'll be on Friday morning. I'd like to request a CHAB meeting, Citizens Homeless Advisory Board meeting. We haven't had, we had a meeting scheduled for September. That was canceled. Before that, it was eight or nine months. I don't even know why this board exists, if we're not going to utilize the talent that we have here to bring the folks together and talk about the homeless community and the homeless issues. Next, I'd like to request an agenda item. I've got Duane Smith here in the audience now talking about this recharge situation. Roger Edwards, who brings it up on a regular basis, you know, retired citizen, senior citizen, a retired veteran, a long-serving member of the county and many different boards and so forth, wants to know why, in his words, why the county is charging for something that the county isn't doing, why the county is charging for something that they haven't done for a long time. This has come up again and again. We've had it up on the board, late notices on a bill for something that didn't happen. This county's sitting on over half a million dollars in reserves in that fund, and I'd like to see if we can get it on the agenda to give refunds to everybody in that district that's being served by this for the last year, and waive any late fees, and just put this thing to bed. I'm talking to Mr. Smith this morning. His staff has other things to do besides this. He has other fish to fry. We've got other things to do. This is just a real sore spot with the community. I'd like to see this fixed. And I'm reaching out to my commissioner from District Four. This isn't even my district. District Four can help put this thing to bed, and there's several hundred folks in her district that this needs to be addressed by. It's come up time and time again. She's remained silent about this, and I need some help. And it isn't for me. It isn't coming out of my bank account. It's her constituents are being charged for something that's not taking place. So ask her to help her constituents, not me. I don't need the help. Her constituents need the help. I'd be willing to help her constituents, and I'd ask her to do the same thing. Talk with Mr. Smith, and let's figure out how we can get this thing put to bed once and for all, so we don't have to hear Mr. Edwards talking about this in public comment, week after week, month after month. Thank you. Continue on with board appointments that we're going to be talking about today. As the former assessor deals hand-in-hand with the County Board of Equalization, the County Board of Equalization, you know, to put it in simplistic terms, the assessor values a property, the taxpayer thinks it's right or wrong. If the taxpayer thinks it's wrong, then the Board of Equalization acts as umpires. And they judge this situation. They act as the safety valve to make sure that citizens are heard properly. But it's a technical appointment. We've got people that may or may not have the level of expertise. I mean, if you're looking at an umpire in a sporting event, they probably have the rules of the game memorized. So we need to take a good, hard look at who we're going to appoint for this. I know when I was the assessor, I saw several people on the board that, nice enough folks, I'm not going to mention their name, but they didn't know what they were talking about. There were many times when the assessor's office, not many times, but several times, a lot of, it happens. Mistakes are made, and when it's brought to your attention, you need to fix that. But many times, the Board of Equalization would vote against logic because they were unaware of what was taking place. So I think that it's incumbent, and I'm talking now to my fellow commissioners, to make sure we have somebody who's qualified, or we end up with a situation like we had up at Incline Village. And now that Incline Village, and for those of you not aware of it, the assessor, two assessors ago, three assessors ago now, overvalued property at Incline Village. We, I believe we recently paid that off. It could have been as high as $100 million. I don't know what the exact number is, but I'd like to make that a request, to get the final numbers to me and what we actually had to refund the citizens of Incline Village. In public comment today, Trista Gomez made some good comments about the lack of ease of looking at the county budget. I know exactly what she's talking about. I've been trying to get the exact numbers on the CARES campus for, I don't know, six or eight months. Can't seem to get a straight answer. So I haven't let that go by the wayside. I just haven't been bringing it up. Paul White made some excellent comments about the CARES campus and reaching out to Mayor Shivi. I hope that's true, and I hope we can have a discussion with the mayor to figure out how we can get some better outcomes there. Tim McGivney gave some comments about the CARES campus. And Jessica Glover, who's been on this, been homeless, been on the streets, she gave some good first-person information about the CARES campus. So good information. As far as the new registrar voters, I'm glad to hear that we have a new registrar voters waiting in the wings. You know, we live in a gaming state, and I'm hoping maybe that we can get somebody at one of the sports books, so we can get an over and under on how long the registrar voters may stay, how long before they say they're leaving for stress. I mean, I think that would be some good betting that we could have around here. The way we turn over registrar voters with so-called stress issues, and then they personally recant that, I think that's something the public needs to pay attention to. So I'd like to see how long the new registrar voter's going to stay with us. And lastly, I want to apologize to the Sheriff's Association for not making it to their holiday party. I live in Washoe Valley. We had a lot of snow, a lot of rain, and a lot of snow and rain on the ground Saturday, so I didn't make it to their function. But I want to apologize to the sheriffs for missing their party. Thank you.
Well, I'll just round out the comments here. It has been a wonderful year, 2024. I think that the county has a lot to be proud of about the work that we've done for our community, and it's been a joy to serve, both with my coworkers at the DIAS and my coworkers who work for Washoe County. And as a former government employee, I know it can feel like your work is not recognized, and you are not seen, and that the public can be very critical, certainly, and we can be very critical as we're looking at these projects that you bring us. But please know that public service is incredibly important to this community. Your public service is incredibly important, and I'm honored to work with all of you. And I really am excited for this next year of work. We, I just want to inform the public, we have our strategic planning session coming up on January 28th, and I think it's going to be a really great day where we're going to talk about all of our priorities, kind of confirm the priorities that we've already given to staff. And I hope folks will stay engaged, because this county, we are really moving towards being the most livable county for all residents in Washoe County. We serve everyone, and we should be very proud about that. And I hope my coworkers and all county employees have an incredible holiday and come back energized and ready to go for what is going to be a really great year, 2025. Commissioner Clark, I see you're signed in again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did forget one item. I would like maybe a staff report, some information about why item number 20 was pulled from the agenda today. I'd like to know why it was pulled. I'd like to know what staff were involved in that decision and what the reason for pulling that particular item from today's agenda. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will now move into our donations. Commissioner Garcia, if you could help us with that.
Of course, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
6A1 highlights the food, goods, and money from citizens, businesses, and nonprofits like the SPCA to support Washoe County Regional Animal Services. So that's the first item. Special thanks to Washoe County K-9 Partners for K-9 dog equipment. But more than anything, I didn't know much about this organization. I hopped online. This organization started in 1996 with an idea from a kindergarten classroom that wanted to raise money for a canine named Jimmy to have a bulletproof vest. So it's pretty amazing that this was born out of the minds of our young people. So thank you to the board who sits on that nonprofit. And with that, it's a form of emotion.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Looking for a second from the board.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clark, is there any public comment on that item? Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Clark, you're signed in.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and have the vote. I have one comment I need to make after the vote.
For this item?
For my public comments earlier. I need to just get it on the record that I want to apologize to Commissioner Andriola. That particular constituent is definitely not in her district, so I apologize for that.
It's not great to call out coworkers at the DIAS. It's a good lesson. All right, we have a motion and a second. No public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that motion posts, there we go. It's on your screen. And that motion passes unanimously. We're now into our consent items. Manager Brown, do we have any items we need to pull from consent?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, is there any public comment on the consent?
There's nobody signed in.
Thank you. If there's no questions from the board, I am looking for a motion on the consent.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. I look to Vice Chair Herman to help us with a block vote tonight, today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to make a comment about item nine. And there's a big thank you from Lemon Valley on that one.
Oh, wonderful.
Much needed. And then 13, I'm just going to reiterate a little bit about the senior foods. So remind us about checking in on these and making sure. So the block vote would be nine, 10, 11, 13, 15, 17, 18, and that is a motion.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Herman. I am looking for a second on the block vote from the board.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clark, is there any public comment on the block vote?
There is. Nobody signed in for any of the block items.
Okay. With a motion and a second, any questions on that from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to item eight. And Manager Brown.
Item eight is a recommendation to appoint two candidates from a pool of applicants, including Michael Gratz, Rost Olson, Tracy Thomas, and Corinthia Yancey to fill two vacancies on the Washoe County Board of Equalization, with one term beginning on January 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2026, and the other term beginning on January 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2028.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. And Ms. Wilson, welcome.
Yes, good morning. Alexandra Wilson for the record, as part of the commission's support team. So today, you're going to be picking your top two candidates for the two open positions. Usually, we would select more, but because there's so minimal candidates, we are only selecting our top two. The clerk will be passing out the ballots for you guys to vote on. Once we have the top candidate, we will vote for the three-year term first, and then we will vote for the one-year term second.
Okay. Yes, three years is your first vote. And, yeah, top two for three. And if you just, if you just have one candidate, you can do that as well, correct?
Yeah, you guys are welcome to vote for one or two.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And this is for the three-year term that we're voting on right now. And I just realized, I did not take public comment on this item. I am so sorry. Is there any public comment on this item? I'm so sorry, Madam Clark.
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. I didn't see any, but I just want to make sure. Thank you for that. So we have cast our votes for the three-year term, and I look to Madam Clark.
Commissioner Herman nominates Rost Olson and Tracy Thomas. Commissioner Garcia, Michael Gratz, and Rost Olson. Commissioner, or Chair Hill, Rost Olson. Commissioner Andriola, Rost Olson. Commissioner Clark, Rost Olson and Tracy Thomas.
Okay, so it looks like Mr. Olson is being recommended for the three-year term from the board. I am looking for a motion on that. So, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And a second from Commissioner Andriola. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay. Thank you. I think that passes unanimously. All right. We will now move on to the one-year term. Madam Clark. Oh, wait, we need to have these ballots passed out. Thank you.
Commissioner Herman nominates Tracy Thomas. Commissioner Garcia, Michael Gratz. Chair Hill, Michael Gratz. Commissioner Andriola, Michael Gratz. And Commissioner Clark, Tracy Thomas.
Okay. Looks like there's three votes from Mr. Gratz. I am looking for a motion from that on the board. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. With a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that actually did pop up on your screen there. Okay, that motion passes with Vice Chair Herman in the negative. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now move into item 12. And Manager Brown, I know, are you going to do the?
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, great.
All right. So item 12 is a recommendation to conduct a performance evaluation of Washoe County Manager Eric Brown, including a discussion of the results of the 2024 Performance Feedback Survey to adopt priorities and expectations for the county manager, and discussion and possible action to approve a single lump-sum merit bonus for the county manager in an amount to be determined by the board. Current base salary is $341,058.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. I will say, this is the first time I've ever had to do this evaluation in the morning. Normally, we have agenda items, and I don't get to it till the afternoon, so.
We're being very efficient. Look at us.
Very efficient today. So Patricia Hurley, HR. So today, I'll talk to you guys about the county manager's 2024 performance evaluation. I will start off by kind of giving you a little history on why we're here today, and then I'll hand it over to Elizabeth Jordan, who will talk about the survey. And the reason Washoe would talk about it is there are some changes to the survey, and she'll talk about how it compares to what it was last time, given some of those changes that might mark together. And then we will round it off with Manager Brown talking about is the accomplishments of the county in 2024. So just to get started, just why we're here today, Section 9.03 of his current employment agreement between Washoe County and Manager Brown states that each year, prior to as near as possible to the commensurate date of his contract, the Board of County Commissioners will review and evaluate his performance in accordance with the provisions of Open Meeting Law. NRS 241.033 requires that there be a written notice to the employee at the time and a place of a meeting at least five working days before the meeting, the written notice of a list, and then a written notice of a list of general topics to be discussed. And so that's what you saw in the board item. So just showing that we have met all of those parameters, we started in August 2024. The performance evaluation criteria was agreed to by the chair and county manager Brown. On September 30th, the 2024 per NRS 431.033, HR formally noticed Manager Brown of his evaluation and the date of meeting today. On October 31st, 2024, the performance feedback surveys and data packets were released to all commissioners. to all Commissioners. And then on November 8th, 2024, the survey closed. So with that, I will hand it over to Elizabeth Jordan to talk about the survey.
Good morning. Nice to be here this morning. All right. So we heard the board during the feedback provided at the 2023 evaluation session of County Manager Brown. With that in mind, we worked, consulted an outside individual on best practices. We did research with ICMA and other industry practices, and we combined all of that into what you observed with the process this year. Specifically, some of the changes that we did go through were developing weighted components with very specific objectives, which was different from past years. There was also a data packet that was developed and provided to Commissioners so that they could, it would guide their rating of those objectives. And three-point rating system was instituted, as well as an averaged final evaluation rating. The external stakeholder survey component was also removed this year, although Commissioners were provided the opportunity to gauge that performance based on their own observations. And then we also realigned Washoe County's annual internal employee engagement survey to better coincide with the county manager annual evaluation timeline. All right, so that's survey structure. The strategic planning initiatives component was weighted at 50% with Commissioner input, as well as Board Relations, 30%, and community stakeholder engagement at 10%. Those were the three areas that all Commissioners were provided the opportunity to provide input. And then internal leadership at 10%, and those questions were sent only to Manager Brown's current aid direct reports. There was also one additional section. It was not weighted, and it was an area that allowed Commissioners to provide recommendations for improvement or feedback. The scoring mechanism, we developed and utilized that three-point rubric to assign a score for each item of the evaluation. That score was averaged by section multiplied by the weight for that category, and then a final evaluation score was assigned. The three ratings are there. A one rating is minimally effective, a two rating is effective, a three rating is highly effective. And I'll just make a note that a rating of either two or three means that there is competency and capability within that objective and that metric. Survey response rate, eight direct reports were surveyed and 100% responded. Five Commissioners were surveyed and four responded, and 80% response rate. Both of those response rates are consistent with the 2023 survey. All right, we're going to dive into the survey results. I'm not going to read all of these, but this gives you an overview of the strategic plan objectives that were evaluated under Section 1. There were 15 of them. The majority of the ratings were two and three, so effective or highly effective. And the average weight, sorry, rating for that section was 2.62. The Board Relations area had four questions that were provided to Commissioners. All responses were a rating of two or three, so effective or highly effective, and the section average was 2.17. We were able to compare three of those four questions to previous year. In 2023, all responses from Commissioners were meets or exceeds objectives, so 100% for three of those four questions, which is also consistent for the ratings of this year. So 100% rating of a score of two or three for each of those questions. For internal leadership, Manager Brown's direct reports were provided with four questions. 100% of those responses were effective or highly effective, with a section average of 2.88. Section 4 had three questions around community stakeholder engagement. Again, 100% of those ratings were ranked by Commissioners, those that responded as two or three, effective or highly effective, for a section average of 2.75. There was one Commissioner comment received under Section 5, that non-weighted area, for feedback. And it's a long one, so just a couple comments there. There's a recommendation for a third-party organizational review of the Office of the County Manager to increase efficiency there. And also, a congratulations on the results of the employee engagement survey, and recommendations to increase the professional development and career and growth opportunities as requested by employees on that survey.
So that's a summary that you did there? Okay, got it.
Yes, I summarized that paragraph there. All right, so the final evaluation score for Manager Brown for 2024 is a rating of 2.53, which is effective, nearing toward highly effective, which would have been a score of three. And we have there the weighted score for each of those sections. I did a quick comparison of 2023 to 2024. It's not apples to apples, because we did change the structure, but we were able to think of three buckets that were similar, so leadership, integrity, and communication. In 2023, those responses were 100% consistent with 2024. The third one, communication performance, was at 97%. This year, when we think of those questions that had ratings around communication, response rate of 100%. And just a note on the bottom, that because we're doing kind of an apple and orange situation, that the 2023 percents are based on meets or exceeds expectations, and 2024 are based on a rating of two or three. And therefore, there was growth exhibited in the communication area year over year. And with that, it's our summary. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Looking to the board to see if there's any questions for HR before Eric... Yes, Commissioner Andriola?
I just have a quick question. It might have been the four slides. Sorry, I was trying to count.
That's okay.
And I hate to have you go back, but you have a 10% weight for community, let me, community stakeholder engagement. I thought that changed. That's what's thrown...
No, it is 10.
So the... How was that collected?
So those were the three questions that Commissioners were asked to evaluate Manager Brown's performance in that area, those three questions there.
Okay, so because when, and by the way, thanks for meeting with all the Commissioners and myself extending that opportunity to understand the details of all of this, by the way. It just threw me on stakeholder. I thought that was external, and I just wanted to get that clarification. So that's not external stakeholder. It's internal?
It's internal.
Okay.
It's the three questions and the opportunity for Commissioners to evaluate Manager Brown's stakeholder engagement, but from that internal lens from the Commissioners.
Okay, I appreciate that, because that was a change.
That was a change, correct.
From 2023 to 2024. Thank you for the clarification. Sorry to interrupt.
You're welcome. Nope. That's okay, Commissioner. Any other questions? If not, we'll pass it to Manager Brown.
Not seeing any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the record, County Manager Eric Brown. Thank you, Elizabeth and Patricia. So Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be able to address you again this year as the County Manager here in Washoe County. It's been an absolute joy to serve in this position over the last five years. And this year has been a year of serious challenges, but we've also made serious progress on a lot of our strategic plan priorities. I want to start by acknowledging that the list of accomplishments I'm going to share today are the fruits of our collective labor. I want to thank my team, my direct reports, the department heads, stakeholders in the community that helped make a lot of these things happen, and acknowledge that it isn't the County Manager alone that makes this, makes this work. Starting, this was a year of following, of really follow-through on a lot of our strategic plan priorities. We had our strategic planning session last January. As Chair Hill mentioned, we're going to have one, we have one scheduled for January 28th of next year. And that is really the meeting that sets the tone for staff priorities and county priorities going into budget season. There have been, some of the key areas we focused on have been seniors. Certainly, mental health was something that the board directed staff last year to, that they wanted to see more focused on. And the third item area is really innovation. We have to continue to explore ways of doing things differently. Our reality is that our expenses are, continue to grow faster than our revenues. The revenues that, growth that we've enjoyed over the last four or five years through the COVID situation with federal support, a lot of that is declining. So we have to think more strategically about how we execute, what we execute going forward. Starting with financial management, we are in a very strong, we continue to be in a strong financial position. We have a structurally balanced budget. Moody's improved our bond rating, which is fantastic. We have a clean financial statement audit. We had unanimous board approval of our collective bargaining agreements. That gives us stability over the next four years as we plan our financial future. I do want to do a shout-out to our collections group. This is not an area that gets a lot of attention, but they're averaging $2.45 in revenue for every dollar spent collecting, which is a great return that we're experiencing, maximizing revenue. We also began implementation of a new budgeting software. It's called the Anna Plan, which will greatly modernize our process of budgeting and reporting. We, as a county with over $1 billion of general fund revenue, have been using spreadsheets, which is entirely inappropriate. So we're moving forward with implementation in this budget cycle with the new software. And also, to improve transparency of what we spend, we'll be implementing Open Checkbook, which Commissioner Andriola has, thank you for your leadership in bringing that to our attention. That is also going to be put in place as we move forward in the new budget cycle. As far as vulnerable populations, we completed our CARES Campus construction, which is a very important milestone for us. We also renewed our contracts and expanded our services with our support organizations at the Safe Camp, that would be Karma Box, as well as at our place with Rise and with VOA. All of those agreements are now consistent and in place. And I might mention, the Karma Box expansion has really helped deal with, helped us deal with some of the issues on Fourth Street that we're dealing with. We secured over $20 million in state funding for affordable housing at the CARES Campus. These are the 50 units that are just west of the main facility. So construction has started. That, and we're looking at exploring more affordable housing on the west side of the CARES Campus in the available land that we still have available. We've achieved quality data designation from HUD for how we manage our HMIS, which is our software that allows us to keep track of our, of our clients at the facilities. This is a major achievement coming to the county, which means that we have broad participation from the stakeholder agencies we work with that are using the HMIS platform. We relocated the Men's Crossroads Program, which was in need of a new facility. And then the last bullet point, we successfully screened a documentary of our homeless situation that actually was selected and aired on local television here in northern Nevada. We, at the direction of the Commission, have hired our first Behavioral Health Administrator, that's Julia Ratty, who is off and running on helping us put arrangements in place for the West Hills facility. But also, as the second bullet point indicates, we receive approval from this Commission to our initial Behavioral Health Action Plan, which includes crisis response, the sequential intercept model, SIM, our, again, the Behavioral Health Center plans, and as well as plans for children and families. We've secured over $14.5 million from the State IFC to remodel the West Hills facility. And again, we're moving forward with those plans. We've launched the sequential intercept model initiative, following the Miami model. That will continue to be an area of focus in the year ahead. And then we've hired an opioid analyst to help us administer the BCC-approved opioid action plan. And we've already distributed about $4.5 million in Washoe County opioid abatement and recovery grant funds. Seniors, we've completed the first phase of the Ninth Street Senior Center remodel I mentioned earlier today. The successive Phase Two and Three phases are getting underway next month in January. We've rebid the Senior Center vendor, food vendor agreement. That's coming up on the agenda later today. I want to applaud Ryan Gustafson and his team, Karen, and everybody in HSA for their work and vision in the remodel, in terms of what's been done and what's envisioned. Elections. We had three elections this year, as you all know. The primary, I'm sorry, the presidential preference primary, the June primary, and then the November presidential election. We did successfully execute those, and at the same time, we implemented a new top-down voter registration and election management system in collaboration with the Secretary of State's office. Their Elections Group partnered with us and helped us make that happen. We also followed the recommended staffing model upgrades, so we got fully staffed in our Registrar's Office. We renovated the facilities, and we purchased and installed new equipment. The recruitment, as I mentioned, for the new Registrar voters is underway, and we hope to wrap that up in the next few weeks. Strengthening in our culture of service. So I mentioned innovation as a key element going forward. We are using technology to improve how we do our work and how we deliver services. In terms of outreach to the public, we implemented the Development Hub, which allows all of our communities to monitor development activity and actually provide input on those activities directly into the hub. As you all know, the Development Hub is reviewed at each and every cab meeting so that the citizens can see what's in play in their community. We've launched eComment to allow the public to be able to provide public comment without actually coming down to chambers. And in addition to that, we've opened up virtual participation for our community members in Incline Village and Gerlach, so that they didn't have, they don't have to travel to great distances and through the weather, et cetera. And then Wordly AI, which I mentioned earlier for improved language access for our hearing impaired and for those for whom English may not be their first language. We're in, beyond that, we're innovating our facilities for staff and for the community. So we've done our facilities master plan updates. We have a future of work remodeled that's starting over at the 224 Edison Facility, which is where Tech Services is located, along with the Public Administrator. We are planning for, long-term, we're looking at single point of entry in our buildings here on Ninth Street. And that's largely for safety reasons, as well as for environmental sustainability reasons, to reduce the carbon footprint. We're implementing equity initiatives to be in compliance with our Title VI Civil Rights and Title II ADA requirements. This is an area where the county has had some vulnerability. And in fact, we are in the process, one of the items on the agenda today was a result of a negotiation with... was a result of a negotiation with Department of Justice regarding our vote center locations. They conducted an audit of ours and also the vote center locations in Clark County and found some issues that we need to address. And we're well on the way to addressing those. But going forward, we're going to take a harder look at our other vote center locations as well as facilities that need to be put into compliance if they're not already. We've enhanced our HR programming for labor contracts, recruitment benefits, employment, development, and engagement opportunities. This has been an area, over the last two or three years, our HR department has worked with our department heads to improve our employee development and leadership cultivation programming. I think that is, we see in our employee surveys that we do, that that is being recognized and our employees want more of that. And so it is our intent to continue to work along those lines to improve those services. And speaking of that, we, for the first time, achieved best place to work status by exceeding the 80% threshold in terms of our employee satisfaction rating. This is a big accomplishment and one that we're very proud of. And again, I think it reflects a lot of our efforts to listen to what our employees have to say about their workplace, about their experience as employees, and make sure that we're delivering what they need. It's also interesting that this occurs on the heels of Corn Fairy and all of the challenges that we experienced as we adjusted our compensation schemes. A lot of my role here as county manager involves collaboration and bringing our regional stakeholders together. Some of that has manifested in some of the things you see in terms of bringing broadband to Gerlach, working with Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, working with the Governor's Office of Science and Information and Technology, also Jeff Scott and the libraries. This has been a major success for us and an example of what can happen when we collaborate with other stakeholders. In terms of the regionalization of the computer-aided dispatch system, again, this is a continuation of an initiative that was launched about a little over a year ago. It is on schedule and on budget to be completed by the fall. September is the target date. This will provide a significant improvement in our response times and our ability to serve the public, especially from an emergency medical services standpoint, our ambulance services in the county. And I would also point out, it has set the tone for other regionalization efforts to improve our ability to deliver services, such as the recent MOU between Reno Fire and Truckee Metals Fire in terms of a mutual aid agreement. That all started because we were working together to come to a common platform for computer-aided dispatch. And I think you're going to see, as that platform launches, there are going to be other operational benefits that the region will experience. I do have a county manager advisory council, CMAC, which is made up of community business leaders and also just everyday citizens. We meet monthly and their role is to advise the county manager and my staff on issues from the community's perspective that we can use in terms of actionable next steps on things we're working on and how we're communicating. In terms of emergency management, as you all know, this has been a big year. We had the Hidden Valley floods earlier this year, as well as the Davis Fire. I would just point out to you that all of those organizations that came together to work on those things, I spend a lot of time networking and relationship building with those organizations. So when there is an emergency, there is a common understanding of how we work together and a comfort level and a trust so that we can get things done. And again, I want to thank all of the agencies that we work with. I often say to folks that if there's an emergency, this region works flawlessly together. If nothing's going on, sometimes we don't work so well together. I don't know how to figure that out. But it is a major, I spend a lot of time working with these organizations and leaders to make sure that things go smoothly when we need them to. Ongoing community partnerships, this is a slide I showed last year. These are all organizations, both public-private health, neighboring jurisdictions, et cetera, again, that we work with and I work with on a consistent basis so that I understand what their priorities are and they understand what Washoe County's priorities are. We are an award-winning organization here at Washoe County. You can see over the past year, there's been a lot of recognition. I would point out, the 2024 ICMA Annual Conference selected three of our proposals for presentations that were very well received and very well attended. So Washoe County is being recognized on a national basis for some of our accomplishments and some of our innovation. GFOA, you all know, on an annual basis, we typically get recognized. And then our comms group proudly had three awards of recognition at the Silver Spike Awards here in the region. So just an example of the things that we've been involved with. You know, I want to close out by pointing out, as I do every year, what I see as the key priorities for the year ahead. We're going to talk more about this on the 28th, but you don't have to wait until the 28th. If you have ideas about things that you'd like to see me or our office focus on, I'm always interested in hearing about that. But with regards to vulnerable populations, we'll continue to work on the center formerly known as West Hills. It's now been, we're renaming it the Washoe Behavioral Health Center. So we want to complete that site plan. We're having discussions with the state to make sure that the licensing expectations are understood. And Julia's done a great job of outreach to the mental health provider community to make sure we're well aware of what the needs are in the community and what the existing resources are to serve them. We'll continue the sequential intercept model implementation, I mentioned that earlier. And then pursuing public-private partnerships, particularly as it relates to funding mechanisms for housing, as well as, I think if we're going to ever have a county courthouse update, it's going to require a public-private partnership arrangement. And again, this is another topic that we're planning to put on the agenda for the January Strategic Plan Session. Regional public safety, the regional CAD implementation, I've already talked about that. The second bullet point's very important. We need to support Kelly Etcheverria in updating our emergency management evacuation plan for the county. And that's not just for Incline Village, although that is an acute need. There are multiple areas of the county to be determined where we need to update that plan. And the technology and knowledge that's available to help us do that is significantly better than the last time that the plan was implemented. And then internal initiatives, we're working on the cab. There's a workshop tomorrow night where we'll hear more from the community. And then this will also be on the Strategic Plan Workshop Agenda. We're going to work on improving the case workflow between our institutions, the DA's office, APD, and the PD. And hopefully that'll help us better understand what the staffing needs are to better balance the case workflow between those organizations. We will be implementing, as I said, operational budget enhancements, including the new budget software I talked about. But we're also going to be challenging our department heads, as I mentioned earlier, to come up with new ways of getting things done that, instead of just defaulting to, well, let's add more people. This is not a time, and I need to make this clear, for us to be launching a lot of new initiatives that cost money. This is a time for us to refine the initiatives that we're currently doing, find a way to do them less expensively, because the fiscal outlook over the next three to five-year window is very, very, very concerning. And some of you have heard from other jurisdictions who are facing the pinch. Thankfully, because we've been disciplined from a fiscal standpoint, we're not in the same place many of them are, and I don't want to be where they are. So whether, so we're going to be facing in 2026, the 2026 budget year, another flat budget situation. And again, we won't have the benefit of ARPA money or CARES Act money that we've had over the previous few years. So that concludes my remarks for this morning. Again, I thank you all for supporting me and for the opportunity to continue to serve you and serve the community as county manager.
Thank you, Manager Brown. I will just go down the line for board comments and questions. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for a year of service in the past year and all the progress we've made. And that's about all I want to say right now, but thank you so much.
Yes, and Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, thank you to our staff for bringing forward a tool that is easy to use and it was very straight to the point. And I appreciate you taking the feedback from last year and giving us that measurement tool. And to Manager Brown, you know, there's been a lot of consistency from my perspective in my working relationship with you. And there's three things that kind of have always surfaced for me in terms of things that you've really excelled at. And that's delivering on your strategic priorities. I think you've really shined in delivering positive momentum in the behavioral health realm, in the regionalization of CAD, in the way you handle these emergencies regionally. So I think that's a, always talking and going back to those strategic plans is something I've really appreciated in working with you. The community stakeholder letters that were in the agenda packet and your presence at our cabs is another way that you've shown your ability to work well with community stakeholders and maintain that respect and those relationships that come in at a very critical time when we need them. So I applaud you for that. And then overall, your calm disposition, even during the most stressful circumstances, has really helped us navigate some tough waters. And so those things have always been really consistent in the two years that I've worked with. I know that we're evaluating 2024, but I just wanted to note that consistency across the board, which I think is really important in our leader. And, you know, the metrics show, you know, your strength, your performance on the internal leadership and establishing a strong organizational culture. So that is to be definitely celebrated, especially given that we are such a large organization. And I hope that in 2025, you'll continue to make strides on improving the communication with the board members in a proactive and timely manner. So overall, just congratulations on a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriela.
Thank you. I too want to share how I think everyone recognizes the weight that's on your shoulders in terms of carrying decisions sometimes that aren't always favorable, but then also celebrating those that are. And in terms of the relationships that I have, either from a formal perspective and serving on various boards or out in the community with relationships I've had for a long time, one thing that seems to be consistent is you're building that strength of communication that we saw, even when it was the Hidden Valley flood or it was the extensive relationship building with the Davis Fire. But also the smaller things as well, that maybe folks don't recognize the fact that people in the community in terms of leadership believe that you're always open to having discussions and you're always open to looking at ways of doing things better and supporting the staff as well. You know, you started out by, on your slide, in terms of having several points, but innovation, you spoke specifically to looking at doing things differently and especially with declining funding that you've shared throughout your presentation and those discussions that seem to surface in various ways. I think that there may be an opportunity to consider looking at some, an independent third party that could help with those efficiencies, looking at communication, looking at those streamlining. You know, best business practice is continuous process improvement, always. How do you make things better? Budgets help drive that. The slimming of funding helps drive that. I think there's some, all of us can talk about some things and definitely challenging things with the pandemic, but some things came out of that, just like any other milestone in our history. And I think the county manager's office, being the highest level of the department that represents all of the 3,000-plus employees, I think it would be really advantageous to look at how an independent eye in building those efficiencies, the workload, how busy everyone is, is certainly a testament to the commitment of delivering any responsibility. But I think that there's always room for improvement. And I think that in fairness, I've had this conversation a bit with you recently and I hope that you would look at and maybe if it does come to this board, maybe we can talk more about it during the strategic planning meeting. But I do think it's well needed. And I think getting in front of it now is going to be really important as we look at the tightening of where things need to be tightened. I think the fact that your point about the budgets and what that three-to-five-year outlook is, we're all aware of it. And the fact that Washoe County has such a strong team in terms of leadership, your leadership, as well as the amazing work by, you know, Justin Taylor and the CFO. Everyone is always looking the best way they can be frugal, but there's also ways to cut. And I know no one wants to hear that, but I think it's better to do it on the front end than having to make tougher decisions that some jurisdictions are really faced with. I think that it's great to celebrate that it's the first time Washoe County is the best place to work. I think that is something to celebrate and putting that in the employee satisfaction, I think it demonstrates, obviously, that the culture is here, but I do think it can get better. And so having said that, I really appreciate all the innovation, the AI that has been rolled out and even being tested has been amazing. I use it all the time and I think that's a testament to, again, using the technology, using the efficiencies that are in place, helping the employees succeed, and then how we look at streamlining economically things, I think is something that I'd like to see in 2025. So thank you for your leadership. Thanks for the year. And I think the communication that we can all see, not only internally or with commissioners, but also regionally, there are some opportunities, and I'll bring that up more on January 28th. But thank you again.
Thank you.
And happy holidays.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions.
Okay. Before us today is an opportunity. Before us today is a opportunity for a bonus and also salary adjustment that also the Washoe County employees received. Manager Brown, it's been a tough year, but a challenging year, but I think that this, the county has really risen to the occasion, and I really appreciate your leadership with that. And so today, I'd like to recommend the same salary adjustment that is available to the Washoe County employees, and then a one-time 10% bonus payment, which I don't remember the full cost of that, and I'm hoping Patricia's prepared with that for the motion, but that's what I am recommending to the board. But I'd also like to hear other board comments, and so I know that the vice chair had other comments, so I'm going to go to the vice chair and see, do you have any other comments?
As far as this, this year's benefits and everything, what we're doing today, I agree with what you, as Chair, has presented, and gladly so. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman, and I'll go down the line just to see if there's any other comments before I open it up to public comment. No, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Andrea, and Commissioner Clark.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We're talking about budgetary restraints and tightening of the belts and budget issues and the bleak outlook for future income to the county, and then we turn right around and talk about massive pay raise, bonus, so I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And now I look to you, Madam Clerk, on public comment.
We do have a public commenter, Trista Gomez.
So as you know, I've only been paying attention, really paying attention for about a year when I got fined for an STR. This was the first kind of interaction that I had. Heavy, heavy fine, haven't paid it yet. And when I got that fine, I started to look at what had happened. You know, I'm just a normal woman trying to like raise kids and, you know, deal with teenagers and young adults and businesses and licenses and regulatory fees and traffic. So this was my, this was my experience, and then I get this fine. Really rude employee from the county comes in, and as I've been paying attention this year, I've really had this, I've had a lot of, I've heard a lot about, you know, county employees, and I've heard a lot about, you know, the efficiencies, how great Washoe County is. And really what I have found out is, is it's incredibly hard to get any information. So as a resident, it's very, very hard to get any information. Just this last month, I have been asking for a summary of the payroll-related expenses for the county, and I was given a very long report. I was not given those expenses. I have asked for, I've gone through the correct chain of command to do all kinds of things, because you don't want to be reactionary. It's not my goal to be reactionary, but I am concerned as a resident, while you guys are all very happy with the way that your workplace is, as a resident, we are not feeling as happy. We do not have the pay structure, we do not have the pay guarantee, we don't have the retirement benefits, we are sitting in heavy traffic. We, private sector jobs often, I know people who have private sector businesses and their employees are happy to go to the public sector because the pay and benefit is so much better, so much better. So it's hurting private sectors. We, as residents, are not feeling the great and wonderful effects of the county that the county employees seem to be feeling. I appreciate the comments, that there is a cognizance about that the budget needs to be controlled and that there is going to be a shortfall, but I will tell you, I look at other jurisdictions now, I'm looking at them, and I can go into a budget and I can see the department, the budget, the personnel costs, and the service needs, every single department in several different budgets. It's transparent, it's wonderful, it's lovely. These other government employees, also, they're not making the same level of compensation that we seem to be making here. We seem, from what I can find, to be making a high level of compensation, and my comment as a resident would be that we need to be paying a whole lot more attention to residents and taking surveys for residents and being good to residents. That's all.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I look to Ms. Hurley, what that amount would be, so I'm happy to make the motion unless another board member wants to.
Tricia Hurley, HR for the record. For a 10% bonus, which would be off of his current salary, it would be $34,105.76.
Okay. Thank you for that. So any other board discussion or comments? I'm not, Vice Chair Herman, did you sign in? I'm sorry, I can't see on my screen.
I just wanted to just kind of roll out some information that are my thoughts.
Yes, please.
And, you know, we have our pay scale here at the county for all the employees, and to me, it seems like we're, we shouldn't be treating our, the head of our county employees any differently and in a percentage-wise than what we're taking, how we're taking care of the rest of the employees. So it's just, if that's the percentages that we're using for everyone, it seems like it's, it's pretty, it would be fair, in my simple way to put it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Is that in, are you, no question, just a statement?
It's just a statement.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any other?
And one more thing.
Yes, of course.
I believe it's not a lot higher than, the bonus isn't that much higher than it was last time, but, you know, everything's going up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, well, I'm going to take a stab at the motion. All right. Move to acknowledge the performance evaluation of Washoe County Manager Eric Brown, including the results of the 2024 Performance Feedback Survey, to adopt priorities and expectations for the county manager, and to approve a single lump sum merit bonus for the county manager in the amount of $34,105.76. And I'd like to add to that, I'm sorry, I would like to make sure that he is in line with the rest of the employee pay, okay, and the same salary adjustment available to all Washoe County employees to add to that motion. Is that clear as mud for the board? Okay. Commissioner Garcia.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay. And it's on your screen. And that motion passes four to one with Commissioner Clark and the negative. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 14, Manager Brown.
First of all, thank you very much to the Board of County Commissioners. Item 14 is a recommendation to award a contract procured via requests for proposals, RFP number 3255-24, to Trio Community Meals LLC in support of the Washoe County Human Service Agency nutrition programs, including congregate and home-delivered meals for senior services, shelf-stable meals, the daily soup program, and meals for the Our Place campus and the Joy Home, retroactively for the original term of October 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $3.1 million per year for each year of the original two-year term, with the provision for up to four one-year renewals with contract rate increases as defined in the agreement. And if approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement and related documents.
Thank you very much. I think we have a staff report on this item?
We do.
Okay, great.
Pamela Mann, Human Services Director of Finance and Administration.
Good morning. I'm Cara Pelley. I'm the Division Director over Adult and Senior Services.
Welcome. And do you have a staff report?
Did you want a presentation, or did you just have questions?
I think it'd be helpful to kind of give us some context on this contract. There's been a lot of critique about it, and I just wanted to understand how we got here, what's the difference from the last contract, you know, what the bidding process was, what we're hearing from feedback from seniors who eat these meals, I mean, any of that, that would be helpful for me, yes.
Okay. Well, for the contract purposes, the prior RFP had expired, so we ran a new RFP in this past fiscal, during this calendar year, we ran a new RFP to procure a new contract. We received two bids. One was for shelf-stable meals only, and one was for the provision of the congregate meals, the home-delivered meals, shelf-stable meals, those types of, like, sort of the full gamut of services for meals. The, of the two bidders, one only bid for the shelf-stable, one bid for all forms of service, and that bidder was Trio. And so we negotiated a contract with Trio, which is the contract that's before you today, that offered a number of improved services, including improvements in the quality of food, in the selection and variety of food, the frequency in which meals are rotated on the menu has been improved, and a great deal of effort has gone into taking into consideration some of the feedback we received from seniors about how the meal is even served. For example, serving sliced fruits instead of whole fruits because they're easier to consume. So we took a great deal of that into consideration with the contract negotiations and were able to negotiate a contract for services that will cover the seniors' center, the home-delivered meals, and the Our Place Enjoy meals as well, in compliance with the nutrition requirements from ADSD.
Have we taken surveys from seniors on these meals? And how do we get this feedback? And then what kind of feedback generally are we getting?
Okay.
Good morning. We have done several surveys. That's part of the requirement of the federal funding that we receive. We've done separate surveys with our home-delivered meal participants, as well as our congregate meal guests. The results, most recently, we've received about 175 responses from our home-delivered meal guests, and the majority of those were either satisfied, more than satisfied, or extremely satisfied. There were 21 that were in the lower categories, where they thought there could be improvement. And with our congregate meal response, there were, I believe, around 125, and the percentage was about the same for the congregate meals' satisfaction. All but one said that they would come back again, and they were satisfied with the meals. And please, please understand that we really expect high quality for our seniors as well. So this is something that's important to us, and we take the survey responses seriously. We're getting ready to send out another survey within the next two weeks that will really focus on quality and have space for them to write, you know, anything that they want as far as, you know, what they would see as improvement in the food and nutrition program.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. You have a presentation?
I do.
It's, can we go through the presentation?
Oh, I thought that was what I was asking for, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, take her, take her to the presentation, please.
Um, let's see, are we connected here or is, it's not changing for me? Okay. Oh, gotta do this one, got it. There you go. Okay.
Do we want to go to the surveys? Is that where we're at? Okay.
So we'll just start sort of a little farther back. We'll get back to the surveys, but this is sort of a rundown of the average meals that we're serving in congregate and home-delivered, as well as the volunteers who are part of our process for delivering those meals. As you can see, we have an average of 20 volunteers every week who are helping deliver meals with our folks. Most of them do the driving for the home-delivered meal programs, but some also are in the seniors' center, just engaging with seniors during their time. Last year, that number was nearly, in the last year, that's turned into nearly 71,000 meals that our volunteers alone have helped with. This is the survey data that you asked about, where we did the surveys to, at six total sites for our seniors. And as you can see, we received really solid feedback that they did enjoy dining with us, and they did plan to dine with us again. This is the feedback that Cara mentioned in terms of the perception that meals were excellent, very good, good or fair or poor. And we also engaged with seniors to understand how important it was for them to receive a hot meal delivered to them, and as you can see, most felt that it was very important that they receive a hot meal included. That is originated because we include a hot meal, as well as a cold meal, if you will, a salad, sandwich-type options, and then frozen meals for them to, for the home-delivered program, they get seven meals each week. And then we wanted to kind of understand how the fresh meal or the cold meal was going over with folks, and most seemed to like that as well, as an option. The procurement process we followed, because we released the RFP back in May, we, that RFP included an option for any vendor who wanted to participate with a site visit, to come and see what the facility looks like, what the kitchen looks like, the dining room, how the current flow of operations works, and no site visits were requested. There were, as an opportunity for any possible bidder to include questions to our agency to walk, so that we could make sure our RFP had been clear. No questions were received. The proposals came in in July on time, and they were processed in the procurement and contracts office through Mark Stewart's shop in the comptroller's office. The RFP went out to 231 potential bidders. They, during that time, 12 unique entities, so 12 different businesses, downloaded the bid documents. At two businesses, at least two different people downloaded the document, and then three vendors began the process of submitting bids. One failed to submit any documentation, one submitted all components of the RFP, and one submitted only for the shelf-stable. The evaluation committee of seven members reviewed the bids that we did receive, and that led us into contract negotiations. As I mentioned before, we were able to negotiate for higher-quality ingredients in meat, dairy, produce, as well as having more meals made from scratch. So previously, there were a number of things that were frozen and prepared on-site, and now they'll be prepared fresh on-site. We also were able to expand our soup program to more sites and included more soup options. We get support now from Trio's Certified Dietitian to improve the visual appeal of meals, while still maintaining the standards, because we know that people eat with their eyes first. If it doesn't look appealing, they're not as interested. So we've been working with their dietitian now, and that will be an ongoing service support throughout the life of the contract. And we've also increased some accountability in the contract related to the performance measures of quality and presentation and taste, which also sort of expands into including, you know, feedback from the seniors and some flexibility. Previously, it was difficult to change a menu item, that wasn't popular, and we've worked in the flexibility to do that now on an ongoing basis, so that if we get feedback, we can be more agile in how quickly we change those items on each quarter's menu. As I mentioned, at the seniors' request, we have less whole fruit and more pre-cut fruit, as it was shared with us that that's easier to consume. We also were able to add options for individuals with special dietary needs, whether that's We also were able to add options for individuals with special dietary needs, whether that was medically necessary, vegan, or religion-based needs, and then, of course, more variety, and fewer repeats on the menu. In addition, we were able to get Trio to agree to provide us ingredient details for the items on the menu. This was a request of seniors, who often wanted to understand the, the actual ingredients included in a recipe, to be sure they didn't have any allergies, there were times when something perhaps had almonds, or cinnamon, or something in particular that someone was allergic to, and so by having a book available to them that will list each of the separate ingredients, the seniors themselves can be better informed about what's actually in the meal, whether that's seasoning or product altogether. As Cara mentioned, the next food save, surveys will be going out in December and January. We'll be doing the kitchen remodel as well, which will have us over in a dining room, a modular dining room, and then, of course, the, the senior center improvements that will go along with that, so. And then Cara, I'll let you speak to the volunteer fair, because we're...
Yes, we really rely on our volunteers, and it really helps us to keep our costs down, so we do volunteer fairs throughout the year, to try to get people more involved. We have an ambassador volunteer program for those that do the driving, and there's extra requirements for safe driving, and interaction with people going to their homes, so we'd really like to attract as many volunteers as we can going forward. So this is our next volunteer fair on January 28.
Great.
Anything else we can answer?
Thank you very much, I'll go down the line, Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The more I think about this, it's just, and I don't want the program to cost more, or anything like that, but because of all the people that have called me about this item, you know, and the quality of food, especially from Sun Valley, actually, that was one of the bigger areas that their senior center. Is there any way to have a, like, an independent oversight person, or group, maybe partially volunteers, to look after that? I mean, it seems like we should be able to come up with a way to guarantee that this quality of the food is good, so.
Well, we do have, we have a couple of things that are a little behind the scenes. We do have the invoicing components from Trio that provide us with information regarding the, the food quality, the food items that they're procuring, to go into our menus. And then, of course, we have the staff who are present, who engage with the seniors while they're present for meals, and then, in some cases, case managers, or the delivery folks who are engaging with them just onsite when the meals are delivered to their home, and then the survey processes. So that's what we have currently in place, that gives us some framework, if you will, of how to monitor for quality, for, for both, at the food grade level, the, the grade of meat, the grade of produce, et cetera, as well as the interactions with the, with the clients themselves.
Yes, and I would add that we do have staff that eat the meals as well, just as a quality assurance measure as, as well, so we know that they're tasting good, and there's quality food that, that they're eating. The nutritional standards are pretty strict, as far as salt and certain ingredients that are used, and I think we can all agree, it's much funner to eat out of a restaurant and have anything we want, but in the long run, eating healthy pays off in a lot of different ways, so we see that as an important piece of this meal program.
That's it, we're certainly open to, to looking at other ways. If anybody has any thoughts on how we might do a better job of that, we're, we're open to hearing them, but we do at least try from several different angles currently.
Thank you, anything else, Vice Chair Herman?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you so much, I think with anything county business, it boils down to communication, and I think I was probably talking to the same constituent that Commissioner Herman, Vice Chair Herman was talking about in Sun Valley, and my poor recommendation to the 3-1-1 folks about issues that they're seeing in the county, is that an appropriate avenue for folks? If they, if they're not liking a particular entree or side dish, would that get routed to the right people in your department or division?
Yes, 3-1-1 is a good avenue, and they can always call any of our staff at the senior center, who are onsite and available every day, so whichever is more comfortable for them.
So we could encourage our constituents who have concerns, or things come up on the menu that aren't pleasing to them, to, to maintain that open line of communication via 3-1-1, you will get that, I can reassure them, they will see these, it will get routed to the right people, and, and we can go from there. From my purview, you know, this has been a discussion for months, and, and we knew that the RFP was coming up, and it's unfortunate that we, we didn't have anybody in the community to kind of step up and fill this role. I know Commissioner Clark has been asking to see if other folks in the community, other providers, other partnering agencies could do that, but it just seems like, after talking to Manager Brown, that really, there wasn't any other alternative that we could explore here regionally. Is that still the case, from your perspective?
Yes, that's still the case. We got the word out as well as we could, when the RFP went out back in May, and there have been conversations with local nonprofits, and with the jail, to see what it would take to have those considerate, considered as our meal providers, but that just wasn't able to happen.
Okay, so our best bet and recommendation moving forward for people who have concerns is, A, communicate it, and consistently communicate it, you will hear it and see it, and B, we will consistently communicate with our vendor, to make those modifications and accommodations along the way.
Correct.
All right, that's all we can ask for, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you. Thanks for highlighting some of the really clear restrictions in terms of the nutrition side, and as you pointed out, when you go to a restaurant, even if people should have restrictions, maybe don't, I'm speaking for myself, but my point is, is that you have to follow the compliance piece of this too, which is the balance of the quality, and then also adhering to the requirements in terms of salt, that obviously, as an example, is used a lot for flavoring, that may not be used. But I'm wondering, so I just want to say, we appreciate the fact that you do have some really strict constraints, is what I'm really trying to get at, so we appreciate that. But I do want to ask, the survey results were essentially a year old, and you mentioned that you've been working with the vendor in terms of quality of fresh fruit versus frozen, it's much easier for the, the folks to actually consume it and digest it, so that's an improvement, the quality of some of the food, but we won't really see that until this survey that just went out, is that right? Because when these changes went into place, it's fairly recently, so the survey that we're looking at, that still had a high indication of satisfaction, may actually even be, I'm guessing, only speculating, may actually have even a higher result, as they continue to look at the, the tweaking, if you will, of, of the food. And so, we all know that this is near and dear to Commissioner Clark, and so I'd like to actually acknowledge the fact that, you know, raising this is, is something that I know that a commissioner always is, is really committed to, but we all care, and you all care, and I think that this gives an opportunity, I think, for, again, the continuous process improvement, it, for those in business or lean Six Sigma, is always a way to make things better. It always, there's always room for improvement. I think if there's ever an opportunity to maybe look at having, I'll use the term, instead of, I don't know how you do the survey, if it's a traditional survey, I don't know how that's administered, but I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity to also do it instead of once a year, I'm, I don't want to burden, I know everyone's busy, and I'm not trying to add anymore, but I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if there is a pulse check that we could actually use, maybe twice a year, or even more, depending, just because even though you're, I know the invoices look at the food that's being purchased and that kind of thing, and then the feedback that we receive as commissioners from constituents may not necessarily align with some of that, it might be helpful to also give the vendor the ability to adjust as well, instead of waiting for a long period of time. It's just a recommendation to consider, and maybe you already have, but I would like to throw that out. I also think the fact that we have one respondent makes it difficult, no matter what you're doing, when you only have one, so maybe, I don't know, as, it's just another idea, but maybe if there are other vendors, they could actually, I know that you have a January 28 volunteer day, maybe there's a vendor day, maybe there's a day, no, I, I'm serious, when the kitchen's remodeled, maybe there's an opportunity to bring vendors in, to include, obviously, the current vendor, but to really look at what that, what that entails, because an RFP on a paper, sometimes maybe doesn't always equate, if you will, to the delivery of that. So I'm just throwing out another idea of maybe having a vendor day, and seeing if there's an opportunity to have more competition, you know, for those that are interested. At least, well, 12, we can't count it to be 12, because one downloaded twice, so 11, if my math is right, 11 folks or companies downloaded that application, so there is some interest, where it stopped, I'm not sure, and, and I'm sure you guys are evaluating that, so just throwing out some ideas, but appreciate the fact that you have shared the presentation in, in its entirety, and I would just ask that, maybe when you get the survey results, instead of waiting for the contract renewal, that we look at, maybe having you come back and, and give an update, that would be really helpful, so thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Great suggestions, Commissioner Andrea, Commissioner Clark?
I guess I might have a couple of comments about this, anybody think I do? You know, necessity is the mother of invention, and I think there's a necessity here, but maybe other people don't think that. Just going back and doing this the same way, the same way, the same way, is just a recipe for, for exactly what we have. You know, we've got a, a number of different entities that all do a better job than we do. I'm not saying we have to be the best, but I think seniors at least deserve to be in, in the running, as far as quality. We've got, we've got, the jail serves a number of meals, about 3,600 every day, a lot of custom meals, a lot of specialty meals, do a great job, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the, the food in jail is better than, than the senior center. We've got Carson City doing a fabulous job, we've got Douglas County doing a fabulous job, the, the chef at, at the jail's willing to coach us here at the county, the Carson City folks are willing to coach us, the Douglas County folks are willing to coach us, and, and what we, what are we gonna do? We're gonna award the contract to the same group that, that's had the contract, so why are we even bothering? I've got a lot of questions about the surveys, I'd like to see the survey, I'd like to know what date the surveys were taken, what food was served. You know, I saw some surveys before, that didn't have a date, didn't have the food, and it was 100% satisfaction. I can absolutely guarantee you, Ruth Chris Steakhouse tonight is not gonna have 100% satisfaction, so how did the county get 100% satisfaction? These are meek, meek people in many cases, mild people in many cases, food insecure people in many cases, you know, this isn't gonna kill them eating it, but it isn't as good as it could be, it isn't as good as the Cares Campus, it isn't as good as the jail, it isn't as good as Douglas County, it isn't as good as Carson City, and I've talked to senior people at, at, at the jail, and they said, if they serve this kind of food at the jail, they'd have riots, okay? So you can't tell me that this is satisfied people, that people are happy with this. They might be quiet, but they're not happy with it. Some other questions, I'd like to go back to your slide, heading Meal Enhancement slide, and then I want to see Contract Changes, please. So we're gonna get higher-quality ingredients, meat, dairy, and produce, products, more meals made from scratch, expansion of soup, so all of these things are gonna happen. So this right here is admitting that there was deficiencies in all of these categories prior to this new contract, and yet we're still gonna award the contract to the same folks. You know, when I said necessity is a mother of invention, we should take this in-house as the only way to fix this, where we have quality control, we look at these public-private relationships that they have in Douglas County, we look and see what they do in Carson City, and we emulate people who are doing a better job than us. That's how you get better, you emulate people who are doing a better job, and they're doing a better job. Some of, I think, both of you have been down to those places, I think, I, I would like to see our, this person, this company entity who made the, the contract, made the proposal to us, I'd like to have, have them go down and look at the surrounding communities, and, and see what they can do to, to make us at least enliven with the folks, these are senior citizens that we're talking about. How come people in jail get better food? How come people at the Cares Campus get better food? Catholic charities, I've, I've eaten food at, at these places, I've eaten the meals that are served at the Cares Campus, I've eaten the meals in the jail, and everybody's got better than what we do, and yet we're trying to act like this is the only way to do it, this is the only solution on planet Earth, is this particular company. This is not the only solution, it isn't. Got some other questions for you, I've written some notes down here. You know, I'd like to see the list of the, the other folks that either looked at our, our contract, or, or made proposals, the RFPs. When will the fresh meals start? How many, how many soup options are there? The whole, whole, whole fruit, you know, I've eaten the whole fruit there, or tried to, had to take the banana home and set, and keep it on the counter for a week before it was edible, oranges not ripe, the smallest apples I've ever seen, I mean, it might be fresh fruit, but the quality is, is not there, how, how do you eat a green banana? Okay? What are the, what about new options for specialty diets, medical issues, and, and religious issues? What do we have with that? Do we have, people can, can opt out for those, those things? You know, and when you said the staff eats the meals, is that staff a trio, or is that our Washoe County employees? And I'd like to know about that. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair, Co-Chair, can't even think of it right now, I'm upset about this, Jeannie Herman had a, Commissioner Herman had a good idea, get a senior from each location that eats daily, and line up a person from each of that location to make, make the Oversight Committee. What local nonprofits did Washoe County talk to about taking over the contract? And I'd like to invite the other commissioners to, to attend these lunches that I go to, taste it themselves, and go to the jail, and go to Carson City, and go to Douglas County, and see what other people, what other counties are doing. Just renewing the contract is the lazy way out, in my opinion, thank you.
Do you want to address any of those questions?
I would say we would be open to having a panel, a Quality Assurance Panel, and I, I do think that is a good idea, and I, you know, as far as doing more frequent surveys, I really like that idea as well. We talked about how we could do a survey right after somebody's done, done dining, like how they could give us immediate feedback, so that's something we're looking into. I agree that Carson and Douglas have great meal programs, their communities are very different, and the, the amount of people that we serve is much higher. I, I would have to say, I don't think that we are serving a substandard quality product, but I think, you know, everybody has their right to, to what they believe, and we're always looking to improve what we do offer, so that's something we will continue to do.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Ms. Mann?
As for getting it to more folks, when we, of course, the department itself is constrained by the laws of procurement, in terms of the rules that we have to follow when we release an RFP, in this case, it did go out to 231 potential vendors, and so beyond that is... And so beyond that is, you know, sort of the, we then depend on vendors to respond. And so I do think that we did our best to get it out to as many folks as we could, and it is unfortunate that we only had one bidder, in that it gave us very little room to discern what Company A versus Company B might be able, what those differences might look like. But we do feel comfortable that we did our best in terms of negotiating for better resources in the contract for quality and presentation and what have you, given the constraints of the nutrition requirements.
And I think it's perhaps a question that, I don't know if you've thought of, but if we had a full commercial kitchen at the senior center, which we don't, and which we're not even looking to remodel, and even though we are remodeling, we didn't see that as being a need, because it's my understanding that there is no way we could provide this many meals in-house for this amount of money, even if we did have that commercial kitchen. I just wanted you to, if you could speak to that, if you thought of that.
We did look, from a fiscal standpoint, at what it would take for us to match having internal staff, leaving the cost of a kitchen out of it, and the cost of food out of it. The number comes in somewhere just above $4 million, just to get the staffing and the resources, which is, you know, additional vehicles, additional drivers, cooks, all the components of it. And that is before you factor in the cost of food and/or the cost of building an actual commercial kitchen that would truly support the size of the program in terms of having enough space to do everything fresh on-site. Because despite the additional fresh component, certainly some things are still prepared off-site, the pre-sliced fruit, things of that nature are still coming in prepackaged for our program. And so certainly to have the space to do it, literally every component of every meal from scratch, we would need a larger kitchen to do that. This kitchen was built in 1978, I believe, and was designed to support roughly 50,000 meals a year, and we do nearly that every month. So we are making the most use of the space we do have, but it would be quite a bit more expensive for us to do it internally.
Right, and as far as Catholic charities is concerned, they were not interested in doing an RFP for even the homeless shelter, because they couldn't necessarily meet nutritional guidelines because the food is donated. And they do an amazing job, no question, I'm not disputing that, but I wanted to make it clear that there was no appetite there. And then the jail, you had had extensive conversations with the jail and their security issues and setup issues, and they had no appetite for it. So I do want to say to the team, I know you've been working hard on this, it's hard to have, be criticized so publicly so often, and I'm sorry about that, but I do think when you look at the surveys and it looks like you're gonna do more and perhaps get more constituent feedback from this board, giving you some additional direction, I want to say thank you, and I appreciate the service that you provide to Washoe County. Any other board comments or questions, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Herman?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Clark?
I've got some other comments. You know, just for the record, I'm not criticizing you personally. You're not cooking this stuff. You didn't buy it. It's not on you. So what I'm suggesting, what I like to see is the county do this on a much shorter contract, interim basis, and then, and put together a committee of commissioners and other folks, and interview Carson City and Douglas County, and, you know, we've got a lot of opportunity here. We've got Truckee Meadows Community College that has culinary program, if I'm not mistaken. We've got Job Corps. We've got other folks, and not that the jail's gonna cook the food, but they'd be willing to coach us on how they buy and purchase their food, and how they prepare it, and how they use the spices. I mean, they can, you know, one of the things they're proudest about at the jail is if you're, they say if you're in jail for 30 days, you're not gonna get the same thing twice. They're serving everything. So, you know, the county should be looking at this. We should have a large kitchen. What about disasters, other things that it could be used for? And just think about it, we're actually talking about spending money on our citizens, senior citizens. So, yeah, budgetary issues can go out the window if we're giving money to the CARES campus, but if it's about seniors, I guess we gotta start worrying about the budget. That's my problem. There are better ways to do this than what we're doing. You know, and I'm not picking on you guys at all, because I appreciate what you're doing, and you know that, we meet regularly, but it's just not good to be in last place in this. This is a race we don't want to be in last place in, and I think we are. You admitted that things are better, and it's a smaller, these are smaller counties, but they've got volunteers, they've got other people that have a lot of compassion. We have a lot of folks with compassion here, too, and there's ways to figure out what they're doing and try and do something better for our seniors. That's what this boils down to me. This stuff's not gonna make anybody sick, but at the end of the day, let's do better for the seniors. That's all I'm trying to do, is something better, at least make them equal to what they're getting at the CARES campus, at least make them equal to what they're getting at the jail, and just not write another contract and forget about it. These are senior citizens, played by the rules their whole lives, paid taxes, now they need some help with lunch, and think about this, at the end of the day, we get federal money for this nutrition program, we get state money for it, and then the seniors still have to pay. So how much are we really out? I mean, we is the county. How much are we out of our budget for the seniors when they're having to pay for this, and we're getting federal money to supplement this program, and we're getting state money to supplement this program, and then we charge the seniors? We can do a little bit better, just a little bit better makes a big difference in people's lives. So that's what I'm saying. We should be taking a look at this, and I'm talking to my fellow commissioners now, we should be taking a look at this and seeing how we can do better. We're so focused on doing better for the homeless, let's do better for our senior citizens. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There's no one signed in.
Okay, I am looking for a motion from this board on this item, or further comments. Do I see?
Madam Chair, I move to award the contract to Trio, as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on that motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
It's on your screen, and the motion passes three to two, with Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Clark, and the negative. Okay, we will now move on to Item 16.
Item 16 is a recommendation for discussion and possible action in regard to the appointment and/or reappointment of commissioners to boards and commissions, alteration of terms of service on boards and commissions where legally permissible, and such other action as the Board of Commissioners may desire to take in regard, to take in regard to those administrative matters. Boards and commissions for which possible changes to appointments could be made under this item include all of the boards and commissions listed at the end of the agenda, as the various boards and commissions and commissioners may be members or of or liaisons to.
Thank you, Manager Brown, and I see Ms. Wilson is here. I will just say that you saw from your staff report, there are some expiration date terms. We certainly can keep the same board members on those expired terms. Additionally, there's, if commissioners want to unload any boards that they do not want to be on anymore, this is the opportunity to have that discussion. So, do I, did I miss anything, Ms. Wilson?
No, you're correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Then if there's no questions from the board, I'll just go down the line and see if there's any changes folks want to see, and Vice Chair Herman?
I'd be happy to just remain where I am. I finally got it scheduled, so I could get to everyone.
Good, that's wonderful. Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I've really enjoyed all of the boards that I've been on, eight boards, alternate for seven, the NACO appointment, but at this time, after the election, I kinda wanted to offload a couple, so if I could, I would like to see if the Washoe County Animal Services Advisory Board and the District Board of Health could be served by Commissioner Andriola, if she were amenable to that. I think she'd be a great representative on both of those, and they're wonderful, they're staffed wonderfully as well, and a good composition of the board, so I'm just looking at it from a time-management standpoint. It's a great, it's great and very important work, but I think this would work better for me in the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you, and I'll go to Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you. I, too, would like to, you know, remain as, on the current boards, and I'm happy to serve on the District Board of Health and the Animal Advisory Board.
Okay, thank you, and Commissioner Clark?
I'd like to remain on the boards that I'm on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, with those changes, and Commissioner, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item?
There's none.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Garcia, were those recommendations in the form of a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And Commissioner Andriola, was that a second?
It was.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the changes on animal services and the Health District Board for Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on that motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move in to Item 19, and Ms. Wilson? Back to you. Oh, sorry, Manager Brown.
Give me a chance here. Recommendation to appoint one candidate from a pool of applicants, including Avneet Chabara, Takisha Cooper, Brian E. Urbis, Elroy Ituarte, Sheri Mccone, Rob Pierce, John Pinocchio, Angela Shay, and Ellen W. Zoschak, to serve as Washoe County, as the Washoe County Commission Non-Elected Member to the District Board of Health, for a four-year term beginning on January 1, 2025, and ending on January 31, 2028.
Thank you very much, and Ms. Wilson, do you have any additional information on this?
Yes, Alexandra Wilson for the record. So when the staff report was submitted, we had eight, or I guess nine eligible candidates. At this time, two of those candidates have dropped out, and so you will only have seven to choose from, from your top two.
And those are on the list?
They are on your ballots.
And who dropped out, just for the board?
So Avneet Chabara dropped out, as well as Takisha Cooper.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Madam Clerk, any public comment?
There is, Ellen Zoschak.
Hi, good morning, I guess, good afternoon, Commissioners. I know I was here last week, but I wanted to again state my interest and my qualifications for this role. Not only am I a registered nurse, but I'm a national healthcare consultant, which means that I bring other communities what they're doing to improve the health of their populations. I have recent board experience, I have relevant education, including a master's in public health, and a lot of my competencies include a lot of what we've talked about today, health, social determinants of health, and what keeps our community healthy, also including how are we going to staff in the future healthcare workers, which is gonna be a problem coming up really soon. But my goal is to continue to improve the health of Washoe County, and I just wanted to again state my interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's no one else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, and Ms. Wilson, are we picking the top two candidates?
Yes, you're gonna be choosing your top two candidates out of the seven available.
Okay, thank you very much. The ballots are coming around for the board.
Commissioner Herman selected Eloy Ituarte and Rob Pierce. Commissioner Garcia, Eloy Ituarte and Ellen Zoschak. Commissioner Hill, Eloy Ituarte and Ellen Zoschak. Commissioner Clark, Eloy Ituarte and John Pinocchio. Commissioner Andriola, Eloy Ituarte and Ellen Zoschak.
Okay, it looks like we are recommending Mr. Ituarte, or Dr. Ituarte, and so I am looking for a motion from the board on that.
Second.
Thank you very much, from Commissioner Andriola, and a second from Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your help with that.
Item, may I just say that the caliber of applicants for that, I'm sure everyone knows, I call everyone, and I have to tell you, it is probably one of the most difficult selections this time, and I do really want to thank everyone for applying, because again, the caliber was at the highest level. I wish we could have asked the Department Board of Health if we could expand, just so we could have selected more candidates. So I just would like to recognize again all of the applicants and encourage them to continue to apply and be involved, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and Dr. Kingsley is in the audience, and hopefully he sees these applications of folks who are interested. We have a lot of subcommittees on the Health District Board, and so hopefully they'll be reached out to on future opportunities, so thank you for being engaged on that, and thank you for applying. All right, we are now moving on to our final public comment, Manager Brown.
Item 21 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off this commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
There is nobody signed in.
Oh, my gosh, no. Final happy holidays for this board on public comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we have that repeated, please? Merry Christmas.
Yes, yes. Wonderful. We'll close Item 21, and we'll move into Item 22, Manager Brown.
Item 22 is commissioners, county managers' announcements, reports, and updates, to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything else for us, Manager Brown?
I do not. Madam Chair, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you very much, and Vice Chair Herman?
Merry Christmas to all, and thank you all for getting us through this year.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Likewise, I think just the only thing that's weighing on me, as we enter a new year, it's an opportunity for all of us to look and dig within ourselves, to see how we can also improve as commissioners. We talked a lot about Manager Brown's performance today, but there's always opportunities for us to be more engaged, communicate more effectively, to reach out when you have questions or concerns, and really step into this new year. I feel really optimistic about the upcoming year, and I hope that we all can continue to work together and move this county in a positive direction, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriola?
It's always tough following Commissioner Garcia. You know, when I used to testify at the legislature and work on a lot of bills, there used to be somebody that would come behind me and just say ditto. I feel like I know that, oh, I have a whole new appreciation for the ditto comment for many of the years I sat in many of the chambers there, but I do, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday, and really to enjoy everybody in terms of family and friends, and celebrate with gratitude and gratefulness, because it really is quite a year. We've all been in various ways, in various experiences, whether it's the folks at Hidden Valley, or the Davis Fire, or all of the first responders, everyone, the staff, the county manager. Mary, my request for Mary is that she does not retire and continue to- Mary, my request for Mary is that she does not retire and continue to bring the goodies, and so thank you for that. But I, too, think as we do self-reflection, that we look at 2025 as a way for us to continue to work and improve. As Commissioner Garcia mentioned, there has been a theme today with this continuous process improvement, and I think that speaks to us, and I think it speaks to everyone, that everyone really does care. How we approach things may be different, how we look at things may be different, but we all need to work together, and the more we do that, the better for our community. And I think this is a great way that we can look at 2025 so that we have an opportunity to reach out, to communicate, and more importantly, to think about how we do things better. How do we do things better? All of us, including myself, have incredible ways to improve, so I think that if we then rise to that level, we all make each other better as well. So thank you, have a wonderful, wonderful holiday, and I look forward to 2025.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to wish everyone happy holidays, make sure everybody spends time with their family or whatever they enjoy, and have a good new year. I want to thank Mary for the cookies. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for protecting us to this meeting today. You were on the gravy train today, guys. Merry Christmas. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for a wonderful year. We are going to close out 2024 and looking forward to 2025, and we are adjourned.